Okay, now I'd like to begin the Urbana City Council meeting and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Here.
Mr. Bowersack?
Here.
Mr. Garrick?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Present.
Mayor Pressing?
Here.
First item is approval of the minutes for August 4th, 2008.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Stevenson, seconded by Smythe, any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, that motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay, is there anyone who would like to address the Urbana City Council? Now is your chance. Okay, utter silence. All right, we'll move on. Old business, ordinance number 2008-09-089, an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with the University of Illinois, the Champaign-Urbana Mass Transit District and the City of Champaign for the Car Share Program in Champaign-Urbana. And here we have Mr. Pat Palladie.
Thank you. There's a couple of things to point out to you. Actually, I drafted the cover memo and also the agenda item, both reflect a piece of legislation called an intergovernmental agreement, but the ordinance and the agreement itself is titled an inter-agency agreement. That has to do with the approval process at the University of Illinois. It's a minor technicality our legal division had no issues with, but it isn't exactly seamless between all the documents, and I apologize for that. Otherwise, the document's attached and it is essentially, as I lined it up in my previous memo, it's a three-year agreement, it's a four-way, equal split among the agencies, 25 percent, calls for two cars in Urbana, two in Champaign, and two on the campus. There's also a budget amendment attached to fund it. The budget amendment, as this cover memo says, includes $3,000 to address our marketing obligations under the agreement, which is essentially a shot in the dark. We don't yet know what that's going to be, but we don't think it'll be a significant amount. Our obligations essentially are limited to targeting Urbana residents, our current parking system customers, things like that, put it on the website, fairly straightforward stuff. Certainly no involved marketing program. And also, as we said, the University of Illinois is the lead, or I'm sorry, the Mass Transit District is the lead agency, they'll be contracting with Zipcar. That agreement is not attached. It's a, I think it's called attachment A in this agreement, it's not fully negotiated yet, but it's well on its way. We still hope for an October launch. We'll have a fairly, hopefully, large press conference to kick that off, we'll try out Zipcar here and Zipcar representatives and make as big a splash as we possibly can with that. Otherwise, the, you know, the ordinance that's in front of you calls for the mayor to sign the document on behalf of the City of Urbana and we get going.
I'd like to move approval of the agreement.
Second.
Okay, motion by Barnes, seconded by Smythe.
Charlie?
Pat, so I take it Public Works will be the lead agency responsible for taking care of the car, or developing the program, supervising the program, representing the city at meetings and so on?
Yes and no. Yes to most of that, but the MTD is assuming most of those management obligations locally. We won't have anything to do with any vehicle maintenance or anything like that. But we, yeah, we will, Public Works will represent us. And also, you saw, probably saw in the agreement, it calls for it to be established as a subcommittee of COATs, so, you know, Public Works is well represented, and the city's well represented there as well.
And to follow up on that, have you figured out where the cars are going to be located yet?
Not precisely. All the cars will be located by mutual consent. I think we talked about this a little bit last time, but Zipcar wants the two Urbana cars to be fairly proximate, so if there's an issue with one, you reserve one, and it's not there, somebody wrecked it, or is late bringing it back or something, you're close to the other one, so they can just redirect you to one, you know, within a couple of blocks, hopefully. Tentatively, we're thinking about, in this vicinity, certainly in the downtown area, Lincoln Square is one that seems fairly obvious, particularly if we can encourage people to carpool and then rely on Zipcar. And then another one in fairly close proximity, you know, the parking deck, for instance, would be a logical location, but it's not really very visible, they prefer a more visible location, so we haven't really gotten down to that level of detail yet. It could well be, you know, on this block north of the city building, but it'll be somewhere close to Lincoln Square.
Okay. And then my last question, I know a number of cities like Ann Arbor have done really well with the program, how about cities that haven't done so well? What are, you know, have you seen any of the reports and, for cities that haven't done so well, any reasons for that?
The, it's fairly subjective. I suppose a definition of doing well would be the amount of time it takes the program to pay for itself, to get to an even par. In Ann Arbor, that was a relatively short time. In other communities, it's been a little longer time. I don't know that there's one good answer to that, other than to say that we have it structured and we envision it working in the best possible way, in other words, most closely patterned Ann Arbor. Some issues in some communities where they didn't let undergraduates rent the cars. When Ann Arbor made that change, then the program took off. So we're starting out that, in that direction, so that, at least university students, that the university will stipulate affiliation with, and to, those people between 18 and 21 will be able, will be full-fledged members of the program.
Okay, I guess one thing I would like to see is maybe a car located on this side of campus. I know there was talk of putting a couple in Campus Town, but it would, might behoove us to make sure there's something on this side, you know, around the Gregory 1 and 2, those sort of places where there isn't a lot of parking, but you have a lot of students, you've got a number of dorms in that area and so on, so it would seem like it might make sense to put a car or two in that area.
There is, it's simply a matter of economics. We identified a dozen spots we'd like to have cars in commuter lots and carpool lots and different things, just spread all over the community, and we simply can't afford the revenue guarantee and all that we'd like to have. We have this magic number of 10 vehicles in mind should the program become successful and grow, and certainly those locations will become more diverse and more widespread at that time. But at the beginning, that's, you know...
Now, I take it the way this agreement is written, it's set up so that in the event that the program can grow, and maybe faster than, you know, the minimum and so on, I take it the committee, the subcommittee here is empowered to take and move forward to add cars as needed?
As, you know, that would be, of course, in agreement with Zipcar, but that, the basic assumption there is that we're meeting the revenue guarantee and we're, you know, we're continuing to grow and have more demand, and they want to put as many vehicles in the community as is feasible.
Dennis?
I guess I have two questions. The last time we discussed this, it was brought up, I think, by Charlie, that the desirability of having a truck as part of the fleet if they grew larger, but apparently they don't offer that, is that still true, or have people inquired about trucks?
It's not that, it's not that they don't offer it. They do offer it, it costs more to rent and the revenue guarantee is higher, but that would be a natural expansion of the program.
Yeah. And the second one is, I guess, a nuts and bolts question. Supposedly, people can sign up for these using a website, they can sign up ahead of time using that internet. How do they get access to the car itself? Is there a keypad lock, or is there a key that they need to pick up from some individual?
The Zipcar technology is a card swipe.
A card swipe.
So the car, the keys actually are in the vehicle the entire time, so that you can't take them with you and walk off with them accidentally. So the keys essentially never leave the vehicle, but your access is a card swipe.
I see. Okay, and how do you get your cards? If you want the car...
I think it's a credit card.
That day or something, can you, you still have to wait in the mail to get the card?
No, no, you access your membership, you have to sign up in advance.
Oh.
And so you pledge a credit card online, much like you do anything else, and the charges are automatically against the card, and I think it's that same credit card that opens the door.
I see.
It's not, it's not a difference.
It's not a unique card, like...
I don't think so.
Like a hotel room door or something like that?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Brandon?
Pat, I think this is great, I'm so supportive of this. My one comment about the marketing budget is just that we definitely want to do a good job marketing it, so we don't have to pay any of our revenue guarantee, and I encourage you to use all the free channels the city's got, like the Neighborhood News that goes out to Historic East Urbana, or the email lists to the neighborhoods, at least that are near the downtown. I could see those being a great place to get an initial pool of customers, and UPTV, so, thank you.
And that's exactly where we're going to start, before we, you know, go into any sort of marketing campaign, we're going to hit all the free ones.
Perfect, thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion by Barnes, seconded by Smythe. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersack?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Next is ordinance number 2008-09-090, revising the annual budget to cover the Zipcar program. So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Barnes, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersack?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
You have to ask the mayor, too. Mayor Pressing? Yes. Okay, that motion carries. I don't think we have reports from standing committees or special committees. Are there any reports of officers?
There's one.
Libby Tyler, Community Development Director.
Thank you, I have in Tom Carino's absence the Economic Development Report for August 2008, but before going through that, I wanted to mention some things we've put in front of your desk. First is, in recognition of the 175th birthday of the City of Urbana, we completed history of our department, and this was prepared by Teri Endo, who's our Planning Secretary. We're recent history document, it's 34 years, give or take, for community development, and actually didn't come into having all the five divisions that we have currently just until 2002. But Teri's done a lot of research in our records and used the library to just get some background and given a summary of some of the documents that we work with. She's got some historic photographs that she's included, and talks about the different locations that the department's been housed in, so wanted to get this out to you and hope you enjoy reading it. Second is a report completed by Anna Hochalter, and this was a draft, this is approach for strategic planning for sustainable Urbana, and we've made modifications, we did get some comments on that. So this is now in final form, and it's kind of a blueprint to get started with the Sustainability Commission, and Bill told me they'll be having their first meeting September 16th, 7:00 p.m. upstairs in the executive conference room. So these are your copies. The third item passed out is a packet that we handed out on a move-in day to the students. We handed out about 1,500. We actually have additional ones printed, if you have other ideas, we have these available at the market as well, and we worked with the fire department in getting these out to the students. And next year, we may be able to place these in the dorm rooms, so that each and every student will be able to get one as they move in. And just a couple of items I wanted to point out to you within the packet. One is a newly revised by the mayor, and Lisa Brawls, Living in Urbana, used to call this the Welcome to Urbana for students. We've updated the Welcome to Urbana, which gives the places for just different services, venues for students to go to if they need groceries or get their hair cut, that kind of thing. Living in Urbana is about some of our laws and regulations pertaining to living in Urbana, parking. We have new text on cellphone texting, too, so we kept this up to date, and a nice new photograph on the cover. And the other item that's new and pretty cool is a grassroots effort that Charlie Smythe's been working with, the Cranert District. And this is an entertainment and business district just around the east campus area. So they put this together and we included that in the welcome packet.
Charlie?
I'd like to thank two people, well, CD in general, Tom Carino in particular, who made this all happen, including the Cranert District stuff. You know, Tom ran with the idea last year, and we got out to the dorms and worked with the fire department. This year, we worked even more closely with the fire department, so I want to thank the fire department. Those are the guys and gals standing out there on the curbs and in the streets handing out stuff as the students came through, so it was a nice joint effort across departments, and I appreciate it. These make great Welcome to Urbana packets for new residents in the community, period. I've been handing out last year's to people moving in the neighborhood, and I would ask that CD, like, give each of us 10 packets each to get new people that move into our neighborhoods. And we should ask that, you know, the real estate agents, anybody else, to let us know when somebody new moves into the neighborhoods. It makes a great, a great packet to hand to people. It's very popular in my neighborhood in particular. So thank you very much, Libby.
Thank you. Yes, and thanks to Tom for the legwork on that. We do have many more copies of this, and we'll be doing a direct mail, The Living in Urbana, to catch the people that we didn't, weren't able to hand out to. Just on the Economic Development Report, some highlights, the Common Ground Food Co-op is open in downtown, very exciting. Furniture Lounge, I think is just about ready to open, they'll be opening this week. We are close to completing our work directed by council to prioritize projects downtown and come back to you with some recommendations, so that'll be coming soon. We today received a final draft report for the Cunningham Avenue Beautification Effort, which we've seen some presentations on, so we'll be getting you copies of those. Crystal View Townhomes, the Lakeside Terrace redevelopment is ready to start construction, and tonight, the council will be looking at their Platte approvals, and then street vacations, and those will be the final steps for the city approvals there. Probably read in the paper, there was a change of ownership at the Park Inn, and so we've met once with the prospective owner, and we'll meet again and talk about, hopefully, some positive changes to occur at that location. I've already mentioned the Cranert Center Entertainment District map and brochure, Welcome Effort. Southeast Urbana, I'll be meeting with the Homeowners Association along Lydia Court to talk about screening and operations, and the Myers representative will be coming to town just for that meeting, so we're continuing to work with the neighbors in that situation. Lot of openings this last month in Southeast Urbana, Milo's Restaurant, Carl Clinic, and Provena actually also opened. Pardon me? Oh, Christie, yeah, Provena, Provena's on campus, so that's another location, yeah. Get so many. Papa John's reopened, the Commercial Building for Chris Creek also completed construction as well in Southeast Urbana. Other items, we did submit a grant application to the National Endowment for the Arts, and this is for the Access to Artistic Excellence Program, so hopefully we'll be successful in that effort. And we'll be having our first Public Arts Commission meeting September 24th at 7:00 p.m. here in the council chambers, and we'll be setting up a regular schedule at that meeting. Report on the market at the square, just a lot of activity there. We've had approximately 5,800 patrons per market day, so it's really picked up. We're doing a lot of different types of outreach and advertising. We did get a grant from the state on television advertising, so we have developing those scripts and that footage, and also using just different social networking tools, different blog pages, and other ways to reach out to people. And there was a program called Sprouts at the Market, and this was geared towards children, and just really talking more about food and healthy food at, using the market as a springboard to do that. Continued to work with Royce Wagner on communications for the city. We had a very fun, interesting field trip to Normal and Bloomington, and just saw some very interesting projects there in both communities, and a very, very good trip, well worth the time. They came here the previous month as well. We had a public open house at Anita Purvis for the Crystal Lake Neighborhood Plan. Robert Lewis was there, and it was a great discussion, it was well-attended, and just a lot of questions, and made us realize that we really need to have more regular meetings in our different neighborhoods because of all the issues that do come up, and, you know, good questions that we hope to help answer. And then finally, in August, the Sweet Corn Festival took place. We don't have all the numbers, but it was really successful, and I know I was selling tickets Saturday night and ran out of corn about 9 o'clock, and we were selling so many tickets, it was just so much fun. I know Friday was also huge as well, so hopefully you were able to participate. Any questions on economic development?
Charlie?
Libby, thanks. What was the time, September 16th for the Sustainability Commission?
7:00 p.m.
7:00 p.m. upstairs, right?
Upstairs, yeah.
Thank you.
Heather?
Libby, do we have a date on the opening for Meyer yet? I know the gas station's open.
It's October, and I don't have a date. They are stocking up, and they, they'll be opening, we'll get a little tour when we meet with the neighbors, so we'll see what's all inside. They're getting pretty close, and I believe it'll be early October, but they set that date some months ago, and that's what I'll be...
I have some antsy constituents, so...
Yeah.
They're very excited, they're already telling me about being able to get gas, so...
I'll try to get a specific date for you on that.
Okay, that'd be great, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much, Libby.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to give a officer's report? Okay, let's move on to new business. First is ordinance number 2008-09-091, an ordinance approving a special use permit to allow construction of an accessory building in the R1 Single Family Residential Zoning District for 2105 North Willow Road, Faith Community Church. Robert Myers?
Hi, just for clarification, Faith Community Church is, their general address is 2111 North Willow Road. Their property actually is three parcels, and the accessory building will be on one of those parcels, which is 2105 North Willow Road. So if anyone was wondering, that's the reason that we used two different addresses, but we're, we're clear in the ordinance about what the special use permit pertains to. You may recall that this property was recently annexed into the City of Urbana with a petition by the Faith Community Church. They're looking to expand with an accessory use building, and the property's own R1 Single Family Residential. In that zoning district, churches are allowed by special use permit. So their existing facilities are legal, non-conforming, grandfathered, if you want to call it that, but any additional building activity would, or expansion, I should say, would require a special use permit. That's not only the proper thing to do, but also helps protect them in cases where they might need to get loans or for other reasons. And it just helps protect their own zoning rights. The Plan Commission, on August 21st, reviewed this application and recommended approval by a vote of six to zero, and with three conditions, there's a site plan as part of this packet, that's one of the condition, that it be built essentially according to this site plan, also to provide some screening along this southern boundary of the proposed parking lot expansion, and three, that they provide parking equivalent to what they'll be losing when they build this new building. If you've driven by the site, you'll notice that the Faith Community Church, there's a large church building and then a large parking lot, and this new accessory building for these uses will be built in the center of that parking lot. The reason they didn't, you may wonder also, the reason they didn't add on to the church building itself is that there's some high-power lines, transmission lines through the property, and so they're having to work around that. And for reasons like that, they're, they need to be where they're proposing this building here. I also did note that Marsh Jones, the pastor, is in the audience, so if you have any questions for Faith Community Church, I'm sure he'd be happy to answer those questions. With that, the city staff would like to recommend approval.
Dennis Roberts?
I'd like to move to approve this ordinance with the three conditions that have been enumerated by the Planning Commission.
Okay, motion by Roberts and seconded by Garrick. Sorry, I've been gone for three weeks. Okay, is there any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersack?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Next is ordinance number 2008-09-092, an ordinance approving the purchase of certain real estate at 1302 West Dublin Street. We have John Schneider.
Good evening. This ordinance is approving the purchase of real estate for redevelopment. There's on the property are two structures that we propose to purchase the property at appraised value and subsequently clear the site and make it available for affordable housing development.
Mr. Bowersack?
I'll move approval.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Bowersack, seconded by Roberts. Any questions or discussion?
Yeah, quick one for John here. John, do we, we're gonna have to pay to tear it down, or is it already down?
No, we're gonna have to clear the site.
Okay, so is there money in this already?
Right, right.
Oh, okay, that's part of, that's part of the money. Okay, got it.
Okay, there's no further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersack?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing? Yes. That motion carries. Next, ordinance number 2008-09-093, an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate to Ecological Construction Laboratory for Affordable Housing Development. This is at 901 North Division Avenue. John Schneider?
This is a property we acquired in 1998, I believe, and we proposed to convey it to Ecological Construction Laboratory. We have funding set aside, Chodo Project Funding for their next super-energy-efficient home. They proposed to pre-sell the home to ensure they have a buyer before they begin construction to reduce the overall financing costs, and it's a lot that's a little bit smaller than the normal-sized lot for development, but it'll still fit one of their houses on it.
Brandon Bowersack?
I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Bowersack, seconded by Barnes. Any further discussion? Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, since you mentioned that the house was just kind of tight on the lot, does it, will it require any kind of setback adjustments in the future?
Well, actually, the house is not necessarily going to be tight on the lot, the house is going to be a little bit smaller than the normal Ecolab, than the previous two Ecolab houses. I just mentioned that the lot was a little bit smaller than a normal-sized lot, but there will still be plenty of room without, you know, encroaching in the setback areas.
Okay.
Okay, motion by Bowersack, seconded by Barnes. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersack?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing? Yes. That motion carries. Next is ordinance number 2008-09-094, an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate to Habitat for Humanity of Champaign County for Affordable Housing Development at 1405 and a half West Bezzlin Street. John Schneider?
The lot at 1405 West Bezzlin is a half lot that's approximately 33 feet by 132 feet. We've discussed with the construction manager for Habitat, and they believe they can design a house that's called a shotgun style, which is a little bit, not quite as wide as a normal-sized house, but it'd be longer, and they're able, they're confident they can fit a house on that lot. The lot at 1201 Bezzlin, I'm sure the council's familiar with, it's the one that's... The lot at 1201 Bezlin, I'm sure the council's familiar with, it's the one that's currently being used as a mini-park. I think we were fortunate enough to get Habitat to come to the front to be willing to develop. This is a rather small lot, but again, Habitat has architects on staff or volunteering to work with them to design a house that would work on this lot.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, you're talking about just the first ordinance, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any other discussion on the 1405 and a half West Bezlin Street? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersock?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing? Yes. That motion carries. Next is the lot at 1201 West Bezlin Street, which John Schneider's already explained about. Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Barnes, seconded by Garrick. Any other discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersock?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing? Yes. That motion carries. We have ordinance number 2008-09-096. An ordinance approving combined preliminary and final subdivision plats for Crystal View Town Homes' first subdivision. Libby Tyler's here to explain that.
I mentioned this earlier and I've given regular updates to this council and actually to the previous one about the Crystal View Town Home Project and it's been a feature in our annual action plans for, I think, three years now and our consolidated plan. And we actually have a redevelopment plan for Lakeside Terrace that was adopted by the council back in 2004. There was somewhat of a delay in lining up all the funding for the project, but that did come through in the form of the low-income housing tax credits from IDA this past year and now the engineering and design work is completed and the developer is ready to start construction soon as next month. As far as the replating, this is necessary to allow for the vacation of the existing streets on the property and rededication. The plat cannot be recorded until that vacation occurs and that will be scheduled for the September 15th council meeting. The lots, basically, it's all going to be town home development, so we just have two lots, two developable lots. One on the west side of the realigned Division Avenue and what will now be called Stebbins Drive, was formerly called Lakeside Terrace. And then the other would be on the east side. And so in between, if you look at the plat document, in between these will be a traffic circle and that will be a traffic calming effect and also have greenery and some drainage value as well. So the existing road layout in the older Lakeside Terrace really wasn't functional in terms of accommodating vehicles and providing for an efficient layout. This will be a much, much improved layout for the town homes and subdivision is necessary to allow those to occur. There is one change, a very minor change to the plat that I talked to the engineer about earlier today. And this is in the eastern portion, just below the Bar's subdivision. And they handed out another exhibit showing this area. There's a very small triangle piece that will be labeled as an outlot and that will facilitate transfer to the city so that we can add that to our Bar Avenue right-of-way. And this is consistent with the previous agreement between that property owner, Bill Scott, and the Housing Authority. So that's a very minor change. I wanted to let you know that's probably going to be the best way to dedicate that to the city rather than doing that by a separate instrument. Probably best to just call that an outlot. There's also an outlot shown along the Saline Creek, along the south side of the development, and that will allow for some green space amenities. There are a lot of environmental and green aspects to this development and this is a goal of the developer as well as requirements for a grant. They did receive, in addition to those low-income housing tax credits, a green grant from the state of Illinois. So there's many exciting and different environmental features that will be incorporated into the design. So I think this will be a great example for us, both for improved affordable housing but also the incorporation of these environmental features. And we do have here tonight the developers, that would be Bryn Shore Development and that's Linda Folkerson, and Homestead Corporation and that's Erin Smith, they're here, as well as Tom Burns, who is their engineer. There were three waivers that the Plan Commission reviewed in looking at this combination preliminary final plat. First waiver is one you've all seen before. It's become pretty standard and we do want to change our standards to allow this by right. This is a reduced pavement width from 30 feet down to 28 feet. And again, that provides for better traffic calming and that was recommended for approval by staff in the Plan Commission. The second waiver is one regarding the width of the cul-de-sac at the end of Stebbins Drive and this really pertained to topographic limitations, just is not enough room to construct a full-scale turnaround at that location. However, the traffic will be using the parking area that's behind, if you look at the site plan, there's a parking area behind those rows of town homes and that will be where deliveries will take place and firefighting access will take place. So it won't need to function as a turnaround. And we did discuss different options, you know, stubbing the street out at that location. It was found between our fire department, Public Works, and the engineers and architects for the developer that this was the best option. And really, there's constraint in the depth of the site and the topography, which drops off. So that's the second waiver, which is recommended for approval. And the third waiver is a trade-off and one that we met with and spoke with the Park District. And this pertains to the inclusion of sidewalks. There will be sidewalks on both sides of the roads. One location has an exception, that's the south side of Stebbins Drive, east of that traffic circle. And what was requested by the Park District and the developer was that rather than stubbing this out at the east end of Stebbins Drive where it cannot continue further east because of topography and because of land ownership and then would ultimately, even if it did get through, would end you mid-block on Cunningham Avenue, that it would be safer and more desirable to route the pedestrians as part of our Greenway Plan north along Division Avenue and then they would either continue up to Kerr or, as shown here, there's a Kerr Avenue connection, if you can see that, in the northeast portion of the site. And that's an extra-depth connection to allow for emergency access and would provide for that connection between the two developments. So this was a preferred connection and the pathway system is, these will be five-foot sidewalks, not the four feet that is required in residential, so they're providing for additional connectivity. And, you know, there'll be a green walk and green space along the Saline, also a tot lot and a community building. You'll see the community building there, right along Broadway. Part of the community building will have a green roof. There are bio swills that will extend along Division Avenue and will also tie into a drainage feature within the traffic circle. And geothermal will be used, as well as possibly solar panels will be used for energy savings in the development as part of their grant. I think that's all I have on this, is to go through the Plan Commission at their August meeting and recommended approval, as does the staff. Are there any questions?
Dennis?
I did see in the sideways layouts that there were going to be solar panels on some of the roofs. Is that in certain houses only? Will that be, is that in a certain part of the development or is that gonna be more universal?
I'm gonna ask. Linda Folkerson, can you answer Mr. Roberts' question? Can you come forward so we can get you on tape, please? Thank you.
Yeah, we are planning on doing the solar panels, actually photovoltaic panels, on the community building.
The community building.
And what we're hoping to do, what there, is that those panels will pay for, or should power the maintenance building and community buildings and that, and maybe, if we're lucky, the parking lot lights. So we have talked about a wind turbine, but our sort of show that wind turbines are not as efficient because we're kind of in the little valley there. So I don't think we'll be able to do the wind turbine. I don't know if you've seen them nowadays, they're only about five feet high, six feet high and about three or four feet around and they're hard, they don't even look like wind turbines and that, but we're quite excited about this project. The geothermal, we've taken, it will do the heating, cooling, and hot water heating. We'll supplement some of the hot water heater. That will happen in winter time. We will have hot water heaters also, but that's what we're hoping to do, which will be a substantial savings to the tenants on their utility bills. It's estimated that it'd be anywhere from 40% to 60% savings. And we're estimating a one-bedroom will pay, doing this off the top of my head, about $140 a month if they were to pay for all-electric and this would drop it down to at least anywhere from $70 to $80 a month.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
And I'd just make a comment that I, I'm becoming more attached to driving circles and as a way of interconnecting with other streets. I think they seem to be pretty efficient in large circles. I'd be waiting to see how the residents adopt the driving circle here in this community.
We are too. Have to see how, I mean, because they are, they're very nice about calming traffic and keeping people from speeding through residential areas, so we think that it'll be a great improvement.
It's a good experiment, yes, okay.
Robert Lewis?
Well, this has been a long time coming. And I remember, I don't know if you realize this or not, but I wrote the first demolition plan for Lakeside Terrace for the Housing Authority. But I had one question and I wanted to find out, was there any inquiries with the Planning Commission on the uppermost parking area? It seems like if fire trucks had to get in there, they could go in one way only. And that was the only one that I saw that was an issue right off the bat. It would be off of the, it would be the northeast quadrant of the upper portion. It's a long, long parking lot.
It's by Kerr, the Kerr Avenue connector?
Yeah.
Yes. Originally, we had developed the plan to mirror the west side. However, we were put, we asked to put something in for a possible connection to Kerr Avenue. It was actually going to be a street at one point. So as a result, to make everything meet within the road width, we had to site everything down, which took out our driveways and made it to a long connection. Now, we have not heard anything from the city staff that this is a problem for the fire truck. But since we had spent the money and had redesigned, we just kind of kept it this way because I think it's actually wide enough that they did want to put a street in, I could be wrong, that it could be connected.
Well, I was just concerned about large, big vehicles going in that could only go in one way and have to back out.
We had the same concern, yeah. Same way with the garbage truck, that was a concern. But it was the best solution we could come up with.
Okay.
Because otherwise, we'd have to eliminate a building.
Nobody raised a red flag?
Nobody raised a red flag.
Except me, huh?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'll take my red flag down. Okay.
The fire department hasn't approved this, right?
Yes, they checked all of this and we do have provisions for turnaround. They checked the radius on the traffic circle and they were satisfied with the site plan. We worked closely with them. That particular issue did not come up at the Plan Commission, although we spent quite a bit of time on the cul-de-sac topic, which is a similar discussion. And we have checklists for turnaround. And I think they've looked at the likely locations where they would need to go to fight the fire and I think the sense was that they would be on Division in that event. I know that was one factor.
Good. Took my flag down.
Charlie?
Libby, could you explain a little bit more about the Kerr Avenue connection? I remember we had some discussions before. How is it finally shaping out to connect up with the other development that's up there?
We've, actually, we went a little back and forth on that. We now have a developer team selected on Kerr Avenue and it was their strong request that there not be that connection. But we did feel it was important to have an emergency connection and a pedestrian connection, but it just did not fit with their layout and their plans for the Kerr Avenue to actually have a vehicular connection. We had kind of, I won't say twisted arm, whatever, we had modified the site plan at one point to provide the vehicular connection consistent with our charrette findings, but really wanted to listen to the new development group and understood their concerns. So this is a compromised situation here and as Linda has mentioned, it did result in some redesign of the site plan at the end.
I had one question that was in response to this email thread that I think was maybe just you and the mayor on about how many of the units go to the very low-income category. And I understood that, Libby, you'd provided some information that, of course, the seven do, but that also 18 vouchers that are maybe project-based vouchers would all go through the Housing Authority to the very low-income category. That all made perfect sense to me. I guess my only question on it was, is that in writing with the Housing Authority and is it formalized in any way?
I did talk with Mr. Bland today and they will be pulling from their waiting list, which is very low-income. So the fact is that we will have up to those 18 and, but it's something we'd like to pin down because it's in our redevelopment plan, it's in our agreements, it's in our consolidated plan, it's in our annual exercise where we review the Housing Authority plan. And Mr. Bland did say that he will be working with us to make sure that happens, that we meet our goals, but he also needs to comply with all the Section 8 requirements. And I think that we can do both. And if we can memorialize that with a letter, you know, between, just so we are both talking about the same thing, that would be great. A good thing about this is, again, it provides housing for those people on the waiting list. It's attached to the project, they're not gonna float out elsewhere, and we have the opportunity to get up to 35% of this project to very, occupied by very low-income families, where our goal was 25%. So we can actually exceed our minimum goal in that respect. And, you know, remember, we are trying to citywide, community-wide achieve an 80-unit replacement for the demolition of Lakeside Terrace, so this is going to move us very far along there.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, please.
Yeah, it is our intention to ensure that we have the 30% AMI at 25 units. And in fact, it's Exhibit G in your packet, it's called the executive summary that we put in there. And on the second page, under demand and viability, our last sentence in that paragraph, it says, "Between the seven units at 30% AMI and 18 project vouchers, 90% of our very low-income units will be affordable to households whose incomes are below 30% AMI." So, I mean, you have to realize, there are nine layers of financing. Everybody has a little bit different rules. So, you know, 50% AMI is, allows some of their programs go as far as income. And so what we're saying of the, if I'm doing my math right, of the 28 units, that we are assuring that 21 of them will be very low. Did I do my math right? 18, 25 of them will be affordable to people whose AMI is below 30%. And many of them will be even further below that and that, so, so yes, it is our intention, you know, to me, the most important thing is we will tell this to our property manager and we always oversee to make sure the property manager carries out what we say to do. And they work closely with the Housing Authority, so I'm sure this will definitely positively will happen.
Charlie?
So to follow up on what Libby said and what you said, you talked, Libby talked about a letter here. What exactly... What exactly do we have been doing?
Just simply what we've been doing all along, memorializing what our requests are. It's essentially a condition of the city funding, but we realize that there are certain limits that are placed on the financing that Bryn Shor brought forward and there are Section 8 requirements. As a practical matter, there'll be, housing authority will be pulling from their waiting list and it is very low income. It's not just 30 percent, it's, it's lower than that. So as a practical matter, the effect will be that those will be the tenants for that amount. And so when Mr. Bland gets back from his vacation, I interrupted his vacation when I called him today and we're just sort of pass each other, we'll sit down and work that out.
Any other questions? Was there a motion? All right, you'll have to refresh my memory, who made the motion? I don't know if there was one. All right, well, let's get.
Then I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we accept this plan as provided and with the three waivers that were introduced to it by the commission.
Second.
Okay, this is ordinance number 2008-09-096, right?
That is correct.
Okay, motion by Roberts, seconded by Lewis. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersaw?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries.
May I make one last comment?
Yeah.
I would like to thank your staff. They have been very professional, very helpful and have made this a relatively easy process for a very complicated project. And you don't know how appreciative we are of this and how lucky you are to have such professional staff working for you. So thank you to Libby, John, to Bill and everybody we've come in contact.
We, we do have a wonderful staff and I want to thank you because I remember you sitting there and talking about geothermal and we were all excited about it and now it got turned down by the state again. So I want to thank you for the persistence and going back over and over again until you got the job done.
You're welcome.
And this is really gonna be something that we're all very excited about.
Yeah. And I just wanted to share on behalf of the Homestead Board and staff, our thanks to city council and city staff for all the help you've provided over the years.
Thank you very much. Next, we have ordinance number 2008-09-088, an order, ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a road right-of-way dedication for 911 North Lincoln Avenue. Libby, do you want to explain that one?
This is a little bit unusual. We're granting ourselves right-of-way instead of from somebody else and we're doing this in preparation for an item, next week's committee meeting whereby we'll be entering into a lease agreement with the Urbana Park District. This property was purchased just about a year ago. It was on the council agenda and the site's been cleared. It will be an expansion of King Park. And so this right-of-way dedication matches other dedications we've required along North Lincoln Avenue for future improvements. Seven feet is the, the width.
Questions? I'd like to move approval?
Second.
Motion by Barnes, seconded by Lewis. Any other discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersaw?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you. Next, we need to go into closed session. Is there a motion?
I move to go into closed session for two items, pending litigation pursuant to Chapter 5 Illinois Consolidated Statutes 120 over 2(c)(2) and Property Acquisition Section, our Illinois Consolidated Statutes 120 over 2(c)(5).
Okay, that was a motion by Smythe, seconded by Barnes. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersaw?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing?
Yes.